Good morning. The meeting is now called to order. Any items from the public? Okay, I'm sorry. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Take your name for the record, please.
My name's Robert Mahaffey. I'm the chairman of the Berkeley County Museum Commission and a member of the county library board. I very much appreciate a few moments to give you an update on where we are. I'm great except for some summer allergies, so you'll forgive me for that. Two purposes, Mr. President, for my appearing before you today. First of all is to thank you all. The commission, since its establishment of the museum commission, has been incredibly supportive, engaged, and as I've reported to you in the past, that support has really given us the leadership to get where we are now. And I want to thank the staff, Gary and Matt, the whole staff, that have been incredibly supportive with what we're doing. Secondly, I want to give you or present or invite you to attend on September 9th, 2:00 in the afternoon, at the old historic courthouse. We will have a public signing of the negotiated contract with the Mills Group, which is a historic buildings architectural firm, that after a process that I'll briefly inform you on, we have decided as a commission to hire them to do the initial renderings, drawings, space allocations, and designs for the old courthouse and the annex building. The commission has, the museum commission, has selected a name, at least for working purposes, the Eastern West Virginia History and Culture Museum. And the Mills Group has reached this point with us in a partnership, as we've been moving through the last two years to get to this point, and with your financial support, we're able to take these steps. The commission selected three panelists, members of the commission. I, as the chair, elected not to be involved directly in the selection process. I wanted the commissioners to really own that process. I facilitated. We sent out a request for qualifications, four firms, highly qualified firms, submitted very comprehensive proposals, and I characterized it like which part of the diamond shines the brightest. I mean, the firms that stepped up were really exemplary. And after an initial review of their proposals, the review panel, which included Rick Trinary, Don Sevilias, and Greg Jones, reviewed the proposals. We had an initial scoring of the proposals, and then we invited in three firms that we interviewed directly. And of those three firms, the commission unanimously selected the Mills Group. They have an office in Shepherdstown. Their headquarters are in Morgantown, and I think also they have an office in Charleston and Huntington. Their reputation, and I'm pleased to provide you with more background and information about the firm, and this Tuesday, again, 2:00 at the old courthouse, we will be having a ceremonial signing of the agreement, really, quite frankly, to be able to get some press, to draw some attention, and to begin the really important strategic work of raising funds for this project. The deliverables that will be available for you for review will be a comprehensive spatial design schematics. They're bringing in these drones that are going to fly around the interior of the buildings and take all these measurements. I was at their office yesterday in Shepherdstown. They'll be doing color-coded design plans. We'll have a number of visuals that we'll be able to share with you and with the public. And then there will be a community charrette, gathering of groups, that will give input to the design for the museum, space allocations, and then we'll do a cost analysis based on those original, that first step. We have $50,000, well, actually, $50,300. Commissioners donated the additional $300, I wish it was $3,000, $300. And we are allocating $40,000 of our taxpayer funds for this process, and then we're keeping 10 in the bank for outreach, PR, marketing, a number of those other aspects. And as we move through this process, our hope is that by end of October, early November, we'll be able to present to you those plans and get your input and comments and suggestions as we move forward. It goes without saying that this obviously is a very preliminary first step. It's an incredibly important one, but it clearly, as we move forward, we're going to be seeking funds and support across the board, in fact, exploring options that may still be available, but that's a bit uncertain, from federal grants, through the National Endowment for the Arts, the National Endowment for the Humanities, and the Institute for Museum Sciences. And of course, we'll be back and have conversations with you all as well. Finally, I just want to point out this book, biography that just came out, New York Times Bestseller List. It's the Life of Senator Charles Sumner. And the commission's last meeting was actually at the Sumner Raymer Building, the historic school building, and I want to thank Commissioner Boyd for attending that meeting. Charles Sumner's life, whatever you may or may not know about him, is extraordinary, and it really, because of the school, the historic school that's here in our community, we have a direct tie with his legacy. So I particularly, as an educator, am looking at how that connection with the Sumner School and how that school came to Martinsburg. And the commission will be signing and donating a copy of this biography to the Sumner Raymer School Library. So with that, I'll take any questions or any comments.
I will tell you, I know your board is active because every time I see one of them, they're asking, you know, where are we going? You know, so the enthusiasm is there, and I think it's important to continue to build that. Just Monday, at the park, at the breakfast in the park, I had several people ask me, what are you going to do with the courthouse? I'm like, well, we're working on some different ideas, and, you know, this is great news this morning that you guys have narrowed us down and...
Yeah, we're very excited about it, and all the commissioners, I speak for them, and I know they'd say the same. While the process has been, some people say running in circles, I say, no, it's a spiral. Every time you sort of make a decision, it moves you to another place. And, you know, we have had, as I've shared with you before, we've never had an issue with having a quorum. You all selected an enormously talented, committed group of people, and...
We're very fortunate to have you as the head. You've done a great job, and we appreciate that.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I'm loving it. I'm having a great time, and it's really been, for my own edification, a learning process that has been a great joy and blessing in a lot of ways. So thank you for appointing me.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Calhoun.
Yeah, I just want to... Do we have a guest I'd like for you to introduce?
I do. It's my honor to introduce you and our attendance today, Melanie Pagliaro, who is the executive director of the County Commission Association for the state, great state of West Virginia. And I serve on that board for the past several years. I've gotten to know Mel and her staff very well, and they work really hard for all the counties in the state of West Virginia, and she does a great job, and she has really changed that association, and we are headed in the right direction because of her leadership. And it's an honor for you, for us, to have you here, Mel, and we appreciate you being here today and visiting with us. Thank you so much.
Yeah, good morning. Welcome to Berkeley County and welcome to the Panhandle. Very good. We do have an amended agenda this morning, so I need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions on the purchase order log? There you go. We have no internal budget revisions this morning. We do have a change of status, hiring recommendation received from Jennifer Swisher, Director of Emergency Communications for Tyler Francisco, as a telecommunicator trainee with an annual salary of $48,674. That's effective 10/25, 10/25/25. Hiring recommendation received from Jennifer Swisher, Director of Emergency Communications for Hallie Salakis. I hope that's close. As a telecommunicator trainee with an annual salary of $48,674, that's effective 10/25/25. Have a letter of resignation received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections, for Dan Johnson, a DRC driver, and that's effective 8/1/25. Letter of retirement received from Chad Weinbrenner, Deputy County Administrator for Kimberly Turner. She's a custodian, and that's effective 9/30/25. We can leave, everybody was present for the April, I'm sorry, for the August 28th meeting, so we'll leave that, those in. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as having. Thank you. Next up is our assessor, Larry Hess. Good morning, sir.
Somebody dropped it in. Put it right here.
All right.
Morning. First thing I have here today would be taxpayer error, just have one. And just to recap, you guys agreed to, we'll give them one-time exempt. We tabled those three that was on the last time that brought up the taxpayer errors. Ashley was off last week. She had a death in the family, so we didn't get the things done this week like we're supposed to. But what I plan on doing is bringing two sheets up. It will have taxpayer error for the ones that only had one, this is the first time. We'll put them on one sheet. The other sheet, if somebody kept doing that, whatever, we'd put that on another sheet. This one, and so those three that you all tabled, we'll have that next week.
Okay.
We didn't get it this week because Ashley was off, but, so, this one is considered a first-time exemption or mistake, whatever. So we have to figure out a way to mark these, I guess, and so I guess maybe we'll just put on them first time on the sheets or whatever. We'll just mark them that way, so you guys will know. But this one that I'm presenting this morning was, they returned a vehicle, shouldn't have been, shouldn't have been on there, but they did, so it's a taxpayer error, but it's their first time, and it's for $177.26.
Yeah, I'm sure in that process, Larry, as you and your folks go through them, you will inform them, say, look, you know, we'll give you grace the first time, but from here on, if you make that mistake, it will stay as is.
Yep, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the request for the tax, a personal tax exoneration due to taxpayer error totaling $177.26.
Then moved, Mr. President.
Then moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All favor, say aye.
Aye.
As having.
Good. All right. Okay, the next thing I have, I do have personal property exonerations this week. I do have eight of them I had to bring up to you, and for the reasons that's listed there, and for the total of those eight, the personal property exonerations come up to $3,444.55 for those eight.
Yeah, I think it's 12.
I'm sorry, 12. You're right.
Okay. So for the 12 personal tax exonerations as described by the assessor, any amount of $3,444.55?
Due to officer error.
Due to officer error.
Yes.
I make that motion, it will prove that.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All favor, say aye.
Aye.
As having. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Do you have one, I have two for real estate. We had to exonerate two for real estate to bring to you. One of them had a wrong tax class, the other one was a house that was disdemolished, and we didn't take it off. But for those two, total real estate exonerations would be $2,243.15 for those two.
Okay, motion approved, the two real estate exonerations due to officer error totaling $2,243.15.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as having.
The only other thing I have is an application for a consolidation of two parcels, belongs to Stephen Gage. He has two parcels in the Martinsburg District, map nine, parcel 232 and 237, and he asked that we put them together so they could just give one tax bill. So I need your approval on that.
Moved to approve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to consolidate the two parcels as described. Further question? All favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as having.
Good. That's all I have. Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
Let's see, Boarding Meeting Reports. Mr. Boyd.
Well, I did have a meeting last Thursday after the meeting here was museum board meeting, but don't think there's much I can tell you about it because it pretty much just got summed up there by the president, so. I did have a story here to tell, but he told it for me, so.
Good. Mr. Hardy.
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. President. Planning Commission meeting on Monday 9th was their standard planning commission meeting. Moved some products, moved some projects forward, final plotted a few things, had a few public hearings, was really uneventful. That's the only meeting that I had this week. Did participate in the Labor Day breakfast at War Memorial Park, as I usually do, as I said the other week, one of my favorite activities to be involved with. I love that Labor Day breakfast out there, and we were there, and I think me and Eddie served about 30 gallons of coffee. It was a lot of coffee, and Steve was over there kind of masterminding everything and keeping everybody moving and shaking, and great turnout. Everyone had a great time and just really appreciate all the people at War Memorial Park, Parks and Rec, Steve Catlett, everyone that makes that thing happen. There's a lot of people that make that happen. Jamie, they had one cooker this year, Jamie Weller was busy. He was, I think he cooked like, did you say 474 steaks?
Yeah, he cooked about 300.
Yeah, Jamie was busy. He was, he was, he was working that grill, so, but just wanted to shout out to everybody and thank everybody for that, and had just such a wonderful time.
What was? Mr. Whitaker.
I didn't have any meetings, but I had to, the Labor Day breakfast, that we had the Interact Club from Great Christian Academy and all their students there that really helped us out a lot. I want to thank them for their participation in that, and that all I did was show up with an appetite, so.
Well, I tell you, those children are very polite, they're so, they're so nice to be around, and thank, please thank them for coming in and helping.
Jen Stanley organizes that, so, big shout out to her.
They do a great job. They really are, just really nice, nice young children.
I call Jen every year about a week before, they, please tell me you're coming in with your students, please tell me you're coming. So she's, they're unbelievable, so.
Mr. Whitaker. I'm sorry, Commissioner Calhoun.
Well, last Thursday after, in the evening, we had our ambulance authority monthly meeting. I just wanted to say this because I usually send you out emails about the updates on the ambulance authority, and things are going really well there, but since the changes have been made in shifting people around to different stations, just in the first month alone, our average response time in Berkeley County for an ambulance call was eight, eight and a half minutes. It's now been reduced to seven and a half minutes, and we only think it's going to get better. So, and of course, once we get the North Berkeley Station built here in the next few years, it's even going to improve more. So just an awesome thing for our community. I do want to thank all of you that helped with the Labor Day breakfast. You know, it takes about 50 volunteers that morning to pull that off on a holiday morning to be up early like that to work, and if you want to earn your pay, you really be one of the cooks that day, and you cook for three and a half straight hours, nonstop, but the weather was perfect. We're probably going to net $14,000, $15,000 again for the park, and the money this year is going towards a new ADA cesspool playground unit in the park. All the money for that is sponsored by the War Memorial Park Association, so all the money goes into War Memorial Park. But there'll be a new $150,000 playground, and there'll be an LWCF grant from the Economic Development Office for $75,000. We've got money coming from both state senators, Barrett and Rucker, and we also have money coming from the East West Virginia Community Foundation, the Randy Smith Fund, and then the breakfast money. And we're very fortunate to be able to, hopefully, between now and next spring, there'll be a new ADA cesspool playground there at the park, so, wonderful stuff. Last evening, I attended, along with Eddie and Chad, the Educational Future Conference that the Board of Ed hosted at the Holiday Inn last night from 6:00 to 8:30. They're planning a 10-year... They're planning a 10-year plan for the school system on the growth of the school system, where to go next. It seemed to me like the theme of the night, and I supported it totally, is instead of building another high school, is concentrating on an addition or a new school comparable to James Runzey. Kids that don't want to go to college or don't need to go to college, need an occupation, and are really lacking in that respect. And hoping as a result of this thing, that that's the direction that Berkeley County will head to focus on there. I call it go tech, they call it career tech, I think is the proper term now. A hands-on type jobs that actually typically pay well in today's world, whether you have a college education or not. So, kudos to the school system on what they're doing there. Also, last evening after I left there, I stopped by the town of Hedgesville at the town council meeting. And I spoke to them about the impact fee that's going to be put into place and how the process would work, that we are going to have to have the folks in the town of Hedgesville, they do their own building permits, but those fees will be assessed for those folks in the town of Hedgesville as well. And that was received very well. There was no turns at all. And I think that they're glad that the consensus I got where they support the fact that we're implementing impact fees in Berkeley County. And they know the results will be positive, so. Also, while I was there, I had Greg Rowe attend with me as well. And we talked about sewer issues, public sewer issues in the town of Hedgesville. There's some serious issues there that have to be addressed in the next few years. And we just wanted to be transparent and let the council know that what was coming, probably going to have to replace over 8,000 feet of sewer lines in the town over the next few years. And it's going to obviously impact the residents and the hookups and all, but it's something that needs to be done and just wanted to keep them informed. And we also said to them that there'll be future meetings about it, put the engineers and all explaining in more detail the work that's going to take place there in the town to solve these issues.
Very good, thank you. We do have a bid opening, so I'm going to forego my briefing. But the only thing I wanted to mention is that the governor did attend our Labor Day breakfast and took the opportunity to speak to him about our highways and our roads and the necessary improvements that need to be made here in Berkeley County. So that was, that was kind of the highlight of my day there, other than just being there in a wonderful morning. We do have a bid opening for a van, I think, transportation minivan. Correct. It's for the Day Report Center. Mr. President, you do have the certification, the publication placed on the website, sent to known vendors of interest. Unfortunately, you have just one bid. This company has bid on multiple occasions and I personally have tried to get them to respond to us after the bid of, hey, we'd like to buy what you bid. And so I don't have much hope. It's needed, so we'll see. We may come back with a recommendation to buy locally and call it a purchase of a different sort, but we'll find out. One Nation is what it's called.
Do they provide a bid, but then there's no follow-up afterwards?
They email, phone calls. I don't know if they do this to satisfy some sort of quota. Can't get them to call back to us. Well, also, they don't follow directions, so. I got you. Cadet Company LLC out of Willing, West Virginia. The amount of $45,989 for a 2025 Chrysler Voyager LX. What was that amount?
$45,989.
$45,989, as the commissioner said. I know, right. And we do have a letter of resignation from Cindy Thurston on the senior board. Want to thank her for her service. I know that she was.
She hasn't been on there long, but she's a wonderful being, being a wonderful lady. But her lifestyle and schedule right now just doesn't allow her to attend meetings. And so they're already members of the existing board working on a replacement for her.
Yep. Very good, thank you. Next up is Will Lawrenceon. And Will, before you get here, I'm going to slide the gavel over to the vice president. I'm going to slide out and I've got another obligation to take care of, so I will see you guys later.
Morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Will.
This morning, we actually, as the read ahead actually is incorrect, we have 35, not 36 estates for final settlement for the month of September 2025. As I say, we presented 36, but missing from the approval this morning is the estate of Charles A. Holmes III. The reason for that estate's delay in settlement is due to the fact that the estate has one open unreleased claim on public record. As such, our office pulled it from consideration by this body until that claim released is received by my office. Additionally, all other estates proposed for settlement here this morning have either been legally or actually noticed of their proposed pending settlement status as prescribed by West Virginia law. Furthermore, my office has received no written notice of objection from any interested parties of the estates herein. Lastly, all claims of debt publicly filed against each of these estates have either been released as paid in part or in full by the creditors themselves, or the estate has been declared to be insolvent, meaning that no probate assets remain to pay heirs, beneficiaries, and creditors alike. Without objection from any interested party present in the audience this morning, I ask for this commission's consideration for the approval of the 35 estates for final settlement in the month of September 2025.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm moved. Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thanks, Will.
Thank you. I'll have, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, next on the agenda, we have Jonathan Hartens. And he's here with the Mount Air Recovery Village and looking for a letter of support for the West Virginia First Foundation Grant. Welcome and glad to be here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to give you an update on the village and request the commission's support for some grants that we are applying for. Semper Libri is Berkeley County-based nonprofit. And we created the Recovery Village as a pioneer model of recovery housing and community reintegration. It's built on a 72-acre campus where the village provides certified recovery residences and wraparound services for individuals overcoming substance use disorders. With me today is our village director, our social worker, Teresa Jenkins, who's there overseeing the administrative and operations day-to-day. And also with us is Nathan Mondragon. Nathan is in recovery. He's our director of community outreach and links with JLS, Department of Corrections, works with Day Report and treatment facilities all around the state. And it's been very striking since we opened the village in April of this year, how many people are coming to the village from outside of the eastern panhandle? Because there's just two things. One is there's a lack of, of recovery housing that's supportive and structured in other areas of the state. And number two is when other people get clean, they, they need to be able to go to work. And other parts of the state don't have the workforce opportunities that we have here. So as we opened in April of '25 earlier this year, we were supported by federal, state, and philanthropic partners. We have three large recovery residences. And I invite any of you to come out individually or as a group to tour those. And beautiful facilities on the campus out by the VA. Last year about this time, the Berkeley County Commission previously affirmed its support for our project and recognized the impact on recovery, public safety, and workforce development. Since we opened in April, we've had a lot of learning curve we've been going through and finding out some things that we need, that we didn't know we would need. For example, one of the things that we have is our Transportation Assistance Program. We have vans and drivers that provide people transportation to and from work, making sure our employers get their employees there on time and then picked up and returned back to the recovery residences. With the number of people that we have living in the residences and going to a very diverse workforce, some are working in the healthcare industry at Berkeley and Jefferson Medical Centers. We have many out at Quad Graphics, Procter &amp; Gamble. We have those working in the construction industry, working for large contractors in the area. We have people going out to work at all times of the day. And oftentimes, we're stretched for drivers and vehicles. And some of our grant funds that we're requesting are to add to our transportation network. Our operations and administrative oversight is stretched thin. Teresa does a great job handling the day-to-day things. But there are many things that involve not just inside operations, but outside operations, coordination with different DOC departments spread around the state, ERJ, our Day Report Center. And so there's a lot of operations support that's needed. And then as we operate more, our expenses go up and we need someone to be a part-time bookkeeper, taking care of all of our accounts payables, and also all the payments that the residents pay to live there. So we have two grants we've requested the commission to provide a letter of support for. One is called the Momentum Initiative Grant. It supports operational sustainability of Phase 1, including buying some vehicles, adding some staffing, and support for maintenance to meet immediate service needs. A second grant is what West Virginia First puts out called the Direct Opportunity Grant. And that grant, we're requesting funds at least to match some HUD funds that are available to us that we've been working with the Housing and Urban Development Office for Phase 2 construction. And since we've opened in April, many of the residents now who've been there for six months are already starting to think about where they might go to next. And you all are very well informed about the lack of affordable housing in Berkeley County. And so our intention is to start construction on Phase 2 next year, which has already been approved by the county planning commission. That Phase 2 would create 24 apartments for individuals to move up to at a rate that meets the HUD affordable housing cost. This, your county commission's support matters because for a few reasons. One is we want to protect the investments already made. We want to address the pressing needs and obviously strengthen the workforce. And I know you all hear from employers and look at the statistics about the workforce participation rate. And our model is designed to help improve that. So our action requested today is for the commission to endorse and affirm support for our Momentum Initiative and our Direct Opportunity Grants and continue to be a partner with us as we grow the village to reach its full potential. So thank you for listening and I'll take any questions if you have any.
Do you have any questions?
No.
I had a few. How many clients are you serving right now?
Today I have 24 clients, male and female. By the end of the month, I should have 34.
What is your capacity?
54.
Okay. Are you correct you're bringing in people from outside the panhandle in three counties? Are they all West Virginia residents or do you take out of state?
All of the folks that we have come from West Virginia.
They are West Virginia residents.
Now, we are open to other sister counties in Winchester or up in Hagerstown. But most of them, so far all we've had has been West Virginia residents. That's our primary target.
Most everything I've heard about your village has been positive. I haven't heard anything. I've been certain something is needed. I'm surprised you're not a capacity to be honest with you because you're only doing business for a short time. Before you'll get there.
Commissioner, that would be, we screen folks that are in rehab or still incarcerated. And you have dates of their release. So I do, if you would come out and visit, you could see my bedboard, it's pretty full. It's just waiting on those people to be cycle into this next part of recovery.
The other thing that's been noteworthy, that's been part of our learning curve, is that since we opened up in April and now we've been open six months, we've had a fair number of people who've left, who've left successfully, who have gotten jobs, gotten their feet established again, and then now have reintegrated with their families or moved on to their own place. And so we've had a number of people that we thought would still be there, but because of the success that they have, have moved on to their next phase of recovery.
Any chance to work with TJ Van Veen?
Yes. Well, we worked with TJ out of Moorefield and then the local office here, the West Virginia Jobs and Home Program. And then Nathan and Teresa are corrected, connected on a day-to-day with them and had them out to the houses as well.
I serve on that board representing the commissioner in 447. They do a really wonderful job. And then obviously, in today's world, there's a lot of people that are recovering and looking for work. And they've done a terrific job, I think, in placing that speech. It takes a village, like they say, and the job you're doing is really important and.
Would you like to say something as a recovering?
No, sir. You know, I mean, I just, I see. Guys are probably on your way, a lot of silver living, a lot of the. That's what's good. Teresa and I. Kind of what we like to say in guard. A lot of places. That's why there's so. Hey, getting out of treatment, they go to silver living, let's get. So when Dr. H was opening this, you know, I was present for the, I think it was the ground break. And once I got the offer, I was like. And also to add to. Any thoughts? You don't just take. You want someone really wants, you know, or someone's trying to, you know, still be their way on plan. Or just not. Want to get back. Get back to their. Partner, rather than being them. But everything I got into.
Tim Kazada runs our Day Report Center over here. Most of his employees are recovering addicts, you know, and they've been there and done it so long. They know that as well as anyone, what the folks are going through. They really appreciate your efforts and we have a motion from the commission.
I'd like to say something, just want to say something real quick. So Mr. Hartens, you know, we worked together in the past in my past role as a legislator and worked together on your, you know, prior projects. And I'd like to commend you for having Ms. Jenkins with you. I've been personal friends with Teresa Jenkins for 30 years. And she is one of the most loving, kind human beings you ever wanted to be around. I know what a good person she is and I can only imagine.
Yes.
How she, how she interacts with your people down there because she's very kind and loving, but she's got that, she's got that mother's hand when she needs to.
I see that.
Yeah, right. So I know her personality and what a wonderful fit for that job, so.
I do want to let you guys know.
I'll come to the thing, I should have had you.
Something that's very special to me is one thing, one relationship we have built is we are a highway, I guess you would say, to the Veterans Administration. And it is my pleasure.
And it is my pleasure to be able to serve those who served our country. We have about eight recovering veterans with us right now, and we have three more slated to come. One of my houses are almost filled with veterans. So, for us, that is a great thing, because those guys, they're bringing something that others in recovery doesn't have, and they're bringing some structure, rule following, just teaching people respect there. So, it's been a very nice thing to watch and to see that happen with the Veterans Administration. So, I just want to let you guys know, that's just really special to us out there, that we can serve those guys. And the nice thing is, they can go right across the street and have their other services that they need. So, it's been a great place for us to be out there in the county and the beautiful acreage. Most of these young men and women that come to us have never been able to live in an atmosphere that is like what we have. So, I can't wait for us to grow, we're excited.
Thank you for the job you've done.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the support letters for your requests?
There's an authorization to sign, so moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
In tune, we had the one interview that the agenda was changed, too, if we couldn't be here today. So, we're going to take a little break right now. We've been here about 10:15, that was it, 10:30, let's say 10:30. Thank you. Okay, if we will, we'll reconvene in a meeting here. And our next order of business are some interviews. And we're going to start first, where I am, with Matthew Stotler, candidate for the Fire Service Board. If you want to come forward, sir, thank you. Appreciate you being here. Give us your name and all, and then tell us a little something about yourself, and then we'll probably ask some questions from the Commission.
Okay.
And go from there.
All right. I'm Matt Stotler. Got 25-plus years in fire service, past chief of Hedgesville, past president of Berkeley Springs. As of right now, I'm employed with Valley Health as a facility supervisor.
Worked in both Berkeley County?
Yes, Berkeley and Jefferson County.
You've got quite a few facilities here.
There's quite a few, yes, sir.
So, we'll start down with HD, if you have any questions, and we'll move around to...
It seems like you're pretty versed in what you're doing, but do you have any direction or things you'd like to see changed or be done on the Fire Board?
I think we're moving in the right direction. I was chief when we put in the SAFER grant with Elizabeth to get paid staffing at Hedgesville when we submitted that grant. Definitely think it's going in the right direction. We just got a little bit, a couple more steps need to go, updating some equipment and things like that. I think we're going in the right direction.
Yeah. My question would be, with our rapid growth and putting paid fire in our volunteer home, in our volunteer houses, and the equipment, what do you see as one of the biggest challenges that we're going to have in the next five years? And how would you address that challenge being on the Fire Board?
So, I think call volume's going to go up. I do believe that. Equipment's going to take a toll, running more calls, more equipment, more maintenance. That all's going to take a toll. Staffing, I mean, it happens, they're out on a call, you get a second due call. That's really where, I believe that the responsibility lies, Fire Board, to getting fire departments to residents when they have a call.
Thank you. All that response time.
It's it.
I don't really have a question, maybe a comment, but first off, I want to thank you for your, you know, your willingness to give back to the county here. I really appreciate that. I think you hit, one of the concerns that I have is that our budgets that we have are grant-filled, and with that payment of the paid fire service, you're right, I think our, keeping up with our maintenance, keeping up with equipment and the status of, you know, what the firefighter needs versus what they're going to be using, I think it's always going to be a challenge. So, how do you feel as far as, you know, your comfort level of going after more grant money, going after more ways to fund those items? Are you...
Absolutely. Grants are out there for, open for everybody. Submitted quite a few grants when I was chief at Hedgesville. Trying to get free money, hoping taxpayers not spend the dollar, that's the best solution. And it's best for everybody. Best for the firefighter, best for County Commission, best for Berkeley County residents.
Yeah, we're the forefront of the whole state when it comes to, you know, coverage of the county fire service. Here when we first put the first paid ones in, and I want to tell you, it was a leap, and it was a leap of faith that we have in you guys, and I just want to thank you all for that.
If you weren't for the Fire Board, it wouldn't be a 24/7 paid fire service right now in Berkeley County. Your cooperation has been one, in fact, their cooperation has been one. Your cooperation has been one, their cooperation has been one, that's allowed us to get to that point, and it's a great day for Berkeley County when that happened recently. So, I just want to say thank you for your past service, and your willingness to continue to serve. Matt, and obviously, we have several others that we're interviewing, and we'll reach out to you guys as to the results of that, but thank you again.
Thank you, fellas.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And next we have also for the Fire Service Board interview, Joseph Kidwell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Joseph Kidwell, been in the fire service in this county since 1987. I've held positions from department president, cleaning up, to the rescue chief at Hedgesville Fire Department for four years. I'm currently now the lieutenant at Hedgesville Fire Department. I have sat on the Fire Board previously before. Truck manager for premier contracting, oversee all seven of our trucks and tractor-trailers that we run on the road daily.
I see them often. Good-looking rigs you got there.
Thank you, I just took over the position four weeks ago. I left a company in Maryland that I was overseeing 60 trucks, Creekstone Landscaping and Escavating. So, I'm working to readjust where I'm at now because trucks weren't being kept up with, weren't kept, being kept washed, and it's an uphill battle, but it's slowly working.
Especially when the DOG sees a truck and just begging to pull you over.
Oh, yeah.
Start with you, Jimmy.
I know, I'm sorry, I just started, well, thank you, but again, same, just a statement to thank you for your years of service that you already gave to the county and your willingness to do it more. And like I said, we are, we're in the forefront of the whole state when it comes to fire service. And I don't know that I'd ever thought that we would have paid 24/7 fire service in this county, and I am glad to be part of that, that group as far as it helped, you know, the little bit that I helped, but...
It's a wonderful thing.
Leap of faith, yeah.
I'd have never thought back in 1987 when I started, we were averaging about 200 calls a year, now to where we're running over 1,000.
And that's, and that's not going to change, it's only going to continue to grow.
Yep.
And also have to just continue to look for more grants because we're going to need them.
Oh, yes.
And I don't want to put this on the back of the taxpayers, but you know, it's, we've already shadowed them enough, but we're going to do our best not to do that.
Well, the recent, the recent vote by the residents of Berkeley County to allow us, the Fire Board to increase the fee on non-residential fees has been a tremendous help. I don't think if that, if that would not have happened, I'm not so sure we would have been able to afford the 24/7 paid firefighters that we have. And also, something that's going to happen soon are impact fees, and there's going to be a pot, out of the five pots, one of those pots is going to be for fire and rescue, has to be for new growth, but the way we're growing, it's going to be, funding there is going to be available through the impact fees to purchase hopefully pumbers and trucks and whatever's needed as far as materials in the future. And you complement that with the fire fees we have in place, I think we're going to be in pretty good shape over the next decade or so, so.
Yes.
Do you guys have anything else?
I just have the same question, and with our growing population and running more calls and having our paid staff in our volunteer houses, what, what do you see one of the biggest challenges in the next five years that's going to come before the Fire Board, and how would you address those challenges?
Actually, I'm also a volunteer down in Sussex County, Delaware, on the weekends when I'm at my beach house. And that county's about the half the size of Berkeley County with double the departments to cover that county. You can't drive more than five miles without running into another department. In this county, there's a lot of areas that are underserved. Honestly, I'd like to see either substations or new departments, putting, Ardernallville Road area is a prime example. Every, they're, South Berkeley, you're looking at a 10, 15-minute response rate. Baker Heights, new station, they're still 10-minute response time. Then you got Hedgesville, another 15-minute response time. Out off Back Creek Valley Road, you got Back Creek Valley and Hedgesville that are serving that area, you're still looking at a 15, 20-minute response time. Those underserved areas, departments need to be put there for a faster response time.
And Western Berkeley County, Backwood Woods Resort and all that is, that's a critical area.
Yes.
Yeah, and I've said, you know, and this is just for discussion's sake, you know, we use our substations, and West Virginia gives their portion of money to fire halls, fire stations. So, I've never really understood that, so you could have a county like, and I don't mean to pick one, a county like Mingo County may have 17 fire halls, you know, we have, we have five. So, they get 17 times the money, because that money, that first pot of money that the state gives is just divvied up by fire stations. So, it would behoove us to not just use our substations, but to put new stations in. It's not a lot of money, but at least it's, if we're going to put more stations in, they'll be their own stations, we can draw that money down from the state.
You're, you're speaking of the state fire funds?
Yeah.
That comes, those, that's actually based off population?
No, it's based off of, no, I, I was in the legislature for six years, I, I worked that legislation very, very hard. The first pot of money, there's two pots of money, the first pot of money is divvied up just by fire halls. The second pot of the money, there's, it's broken up three different ways, I actually wrote that bill. But, um, but if we had more fire stations, we'd get more times the money from the state, so.
See, we were always told it goes by population.
I want to thank you for your willingness to serve as well, and I do have a question. There's been many of you to apply for this position, so my question to you is, what are your top one or two reasons why you want to be on the board and be in this position?
To support this county and see the growth continue that's going on, and also progress the fire service in the way it should be going. Not only to protect the citizens of this county, but also to protect our firefighters. January 5th, I was actually the assistant commander on a fire back in Hedgesville. Hour after the call, we cleared a call, I actually went into cardiac arrest. There was, there's things that go on that we need to be more responsive and respectful to, that we need to keep an eye on, our paid staff and our volunteers, and that was a real eye-opener.
Volunteer staffing is a still key element to the paid, next thing work, and that's one thing we can't let falter is our volunteers.
Please touch that.
Part of today's world to recruit people, but hopefully, we can maintain that as well.
Yep.
We started in 1987 in this business, and that was a special year for me because my father passed away at a young age in 1987. And I bring that up because I lived in downtown Hedgesville growing up, okay, the big metropolis of Hedgesville, and the fire station was two buildings down from where I lived. So, when the siren went off, we fell out of bed at night. But I have a picture of my dad and those original memories when the fire hall got their first ever fire truck pumper, and he was standing out in front of the fire hall spraying water about 100 feet up in the air and just grinning like, like he was happy as he could be. So, that was a big day back then, and of course, one of my great thrills growing up in life as a child was going through the Fireman's Festival every year in the summer, every fire company in Berkeley County had a Fireman's Festival.
South Berkeley had a great one.
I mean, homemade soups and homemade ham sandwiches and homemade ice cream, and they would work for weeks preparing for it, it was a big deal.
Fireman's carnival.
Live music and carnival, and it was a big deal. And I worked one summer picking cherries at Fordville's Orchard, and in two weeks, I made $20 in two weeks, and I blew it all at the Fireman's Festival in one day, so my dad got mad at me, but, but we appreciate your service, and thank you for your willingness to serve and to be in fact, so, so thank you for being here.
Thank you. All right, thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Okay, I think that concludes, but before I ask, right in front of the public, it looks like there's none, I'm going to ask Melanie to come forward and give a few comments. It's a real honor to have you here today, Mel, and thank you for being here.
Well, thank you, thank you for the opportunity, and I just want to thank you all for being a member of the association, being leaders in the state. You know, a lot of times when we get together, either your staff or you all, when other commissions around the state have issues, we put information out there, and you're, you're so good to respond and to help. And so, what benefits one county can benefit another, and as we work together as a whole, when strong counties make a stronger state. So, I just want to say thank you to you as a commission and to the staff who have been so willing to help us and to help us move things forward on the county level to make us all better, so, thank you.
Now, we had, we had Summer and Daniel Hall here a few weeks ago, Access Strategies presentation, and I said this, we take a little bit of heat about, you know, the funding that we provided to hire them, but I, I made a comment that, you know, our lobbyists helps, works greatly with your organization.
Yes.
Our County Commission Association, oh, every county in West Virginia.
Yeah.
So, that makes me even feel better about the commitment we have to hire these folks because it helps the whole state of West Virginia.
It does, we work really well, I work really well.
You've made some great progress over the last several years, and hopefully, there's better years ahead of us.
I totally agree, they're great to work with, they, we collaborate on almost everything because again, when it helps one county, and we can get something on the books that either is working for a county or that is hindering a county, eventually, as we see our counties grow throughout West Virginia, it's going to help everyone, so that's our philosophy, and so we work really well, I work really well, as well as the other staff at the office with Access Strategies, and it's a great partnership. Glad to have that partnership, very thankful.
Well, thank you for all you do in the legislature, and you know, it's, it's a really hard thing to try to explain that process to people that have not been involved in it and haven't been close to it, and Steve's right, we take some heat for the money that we spend on our access strategies and what they do for us, and I'll defend that all day long. I mean, being a part of the process and working with you for a long time, you need all the representation and all the help you can get, and you know, there's, to me, and maybe I didn't see it till I came to this side of the table, there's a real desire in the legislature to keep counties poor, there's a real desire. I think that's starting to turn to kind of keep the thumb on counties, and I think that's starting to turn a little bit in the state because they see a lot of this grant money that's drying up, and if states, if counties can't take care of themselves, then the state's going to have to take care of them.
That's exactly right.
So, if they don't let the counties have some freedom in being able to generate revenues to take care of their needs, and this county having a lot of needs and having different needs than other counties, and that's, the counties are very different, every, every county has different challenges. So, I, I think that with your work and work of Access Strategies to be able to bring a lot of that money, state-level money back to the counties is much appreciated, and future work, to be able to let counties be a little more independent and be able to take care of themselves. Sometimes we just want Charleston to leave us alone.
Yeah, well, and you were elected to govern, so we need to give you the tools, I think the state needs to give you the tools to govern and not hinder, and that's a lot of what they do, and so...
Everyone's for local control until it comes to time for local control, and then it's pump the brakes.
That's exactly right.
That's always been something that was kicked around the Capitol, but for sure. But thank you for all you do and your staff, you're such a wonderful staff, they treat us so well, and I know the, the hours that you guys spend under the dome during legislative sessions, so, I appreciate it.
The office is just down the street from the Capitol.
And they've always got something to eat for us.
That's exactly right, and, and we appreciate working with, the partnership we have with Access Strategies because you can't have your eyes everywhere, and as you know, there's so many pieces of moving legislation, I think there's 2,000 or more introduced every year, and only 200 get passed, but you're playing a lot of defense, so it's a great partnership to have with them, so, so thank you all, and thank you for your staff, great, great to have them.
Thanks, Mel.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Looks like there's no items from the public, so...
I'll make a motion that we make. We're running a little early, I could, five-minute executive session for real estate matters?
Sure.
Please, real quick.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion for us to go into executive session?
No action to be taken.
No action to be taken.
Okay, we're in executive session. We're in, executive session.